Okay, first on the agenda, we got a public hearing. JMB Investment Company Special Use Permit Request. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on October 18th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia to solicit input on a special use permit request. JMB Investment Company has applied for a special use permit to allow a retail store in an A1 agricultural district. The property consists of approximately 2.19 acres and is located at the intersection of US Highway 58 and Route 758, approximately five miles west of Jonesville. We have anybody here on that behalf?
Can we get you to speak louder without the sound system?
I'm speaking, I'm speaking as loud as I probably can and I want to. I'm not allowed to talk.
Can we get a sound system here so we can hear you? I couldn't even hear him here.
This is a late call even to be in here. Everybody in the circuit court was gone. We do the best we can do when we have to move.
Please try to speak louder.
I mean, all I can do is encourage them to speak up tonight. I've got a loud voice, I can handle it.
My voice is not loud.
Well, mine's not loud, so thank you.
And the more I talk, the lower it gets sometime. Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Jim Ribble.
Come on up front, please.
Okay. I'm with Alpha Land Surveyors out of Tassau, Virginia. We're doing, Alpha, my name is Jim Ribble, R-I-B-B-L-A. With Alpha Land Surveyors out of Tassau, Virginia. We're doing a site development plans for JMB for the proposed Dollar General store. It's what it is. So if anybody's got any questions about the development.
That's very unusual not to have a question. Is there anybody here for public comment on that behalf? Okay, here none, we'll move along. So I guess we need to approve that, um, that the public hearing. Okay, okay, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit request. Okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Upstaying.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next we got departmental reports. Any questions or concerns for those either the Department of Building Inspector or Extension Okay, next we'll move on to the Treasurer's Report. Any questions or concerns from the Treasurer's Report?
We just can't hear where you are, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I can't hear where you are, I'm sorry, I apologize. Treasurer's Report, okay. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Anybody have any questions or concerns for the Treasurer's Report? Okay, next we'll move to public expression, I'm sorry. And anybody here for public expression? I want you to come up, state your name, address, and we'll have three minutes, and whenever the bail goes off, we'll have to end it there regardless of where you're at.
Good day, my name's Johnny Lakens. I guess this thing works either, does it?
No.
Last week, I put a letter to letter in the Powell Valley paper about the private landfill ordeal. I missed out on whatever took place and a vote was taken, I guess. And I understand we've got a trash problem in Lee County and we're hauling it out. I know it costs a lot of money. But I'd just like to know if anybody knows who's this private, where's this at? Does anybody know who came to the administrative officer's awning or whoever and wanted to do this or brought it before the board to have this passed as a private landfill? And if we need a landfill, to me, the county should be able to operate a public landfill for everybody, and that way we know our trash is going in our landfill, not paying a private individual or entity or whoever, you know, to bury our trash. Right now, that's what we're doing. We're sending our tax money out of Lee County, paying somebody to bury Lee County's trash. But if we need a landfill, I would think that we could run our own public landfill instead of paying out to some private individual. We need to bury our trash and nobody else brings their trash into our county, or no chemical companies or anything like that bring stuff in here. And then any money that's saved from this hauling and all this tonnage that we're talking about should go back in the pockets of all these taxpayers from the savings that we would get from burying our own trash here. So, you know, I'd like for everybody to know who, what private, or how many, or whatever. I mean, if one can apply and his land passes, then how many is going to be allowed to do this? Are we all going to have a trash bin in our backyard?
Yeah.
We all going to have us a trash pile then?
So, no, there's not going to be any comment from outside when you do your comment from up here at the podium?
But I mean, I have no problem with us taking care of our own trash. I understand we've got a big problem, but I hope we're all worried about each other and our property and our neighbors because, you know, a private landfill, I've worked around them, I've worked in big business, and I know what can get buried in a private landfill if it's allowed. So, I appreciate you guys and hope you'll stay with us on this and make sure that if it's done, it is done right and there's a lot of oversight to it. And I appreciate you, thank you.
Hey, by one making comment on that? I think I'm for, I agree with everybody's, okay, okay, next.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Fisher and I live in Stickleyville. And currently, I'm the president of the Clinch Coalition. And for 24 years, our organization has sought to protect our forests, our watersheds, and the immense biodiversity of this wonderful region we all live in. But today is a historic day. It is the 50th anniversary of the Clean Water Act. On October the 18th in 1972, the United States Congress finally passed the Clean Water Act. And we still have work to do. We still have pollutions in our rivers and our streams, pollution in our area coming from everything, from the coal mining to wastewater leakages in whether it's the Powell River or the Pound River. So we still have a lot of work to do. So, this raises the question in my mind is when you voted to have a private landfill, what studies, what inquiries, what concerns do you have of the possible environmental impact? And many citizens in the last meeting spoke up with their concerns about contamination of groundwater and such. It's also in the Virginia law that any solid waste planning should involve the citizens with public hearings, substantive public hearings, and even have a citizen advisory group to work with you on this. Because I think everyone here that has this concern, we want to work together on all of this. And the last thing I'll say is, just, I think it was this month, a professor at UVA Wise published an extensive, heavily cited study that says with the effects, continuing effects of climate change, central Appalachia may be the place where people want to come to, to escape the fires of the West, the droughts of the Middle America, the coastal flooding. And we still have a lot of work to do. We have cleanup again of the devastation from coal mining. And we have infrastructure problems, like I said, with our wastewater and sewage and such. But if we really want Lee County to grow and develop and attract people, especially in terms of tourism and economic development, supporting small businesses, then having private landfills where waste is coming in is not the way to go.
I think everybody's here about the landfill. I'm Jan Brown from Downey, Ewing, future business owner in Lee County. I've been doing a lot of research about this private and public, and I know we have a problem. Everybody, every county in the United States has a problem with landfills, with trash. What do we do with it? It's costly. But some of my concerns of doing it private is we lose control of what we're doing in our county, and we could actually end up losing, that we could even take our trash to a landfill in our own county. Because with a private organization, if you read about them, and there are advantages to them, but there's a lot of disadvantages. One is that tipping fees can be regulated, which we would have no controls over. The flow of what's brought into that landfill, if we're not providing them, a private organization, enough trash to keep them running, then they're going to open bids to all over the country, all over the world, that they can, Canada's shipping stuff into the United States now. It could come from China, it could come from wherever, that a private organization can get a contract. And I don't think that's really the way we want to go because our business is going to be based on people living in this county. If you look back at statistics, in 1950, do you know what the population was in Lee County? Do any of you know?
About 45,000, 50,000.
39,000. Do you know what it was in 2020?
22,000.
22,000. Well, we're losing population. The last thing we need to do is be known as a landfill county that lets anybody bring it in. Because we can't regulate, when you start going privatized, we can no longer regulate who comes into this county and brings trash. We lose all control of it. So my request is that you would rescind your vote, start, and let's sit down and talk about this and figure out a good solution. And I'm not saying that we don't need to keep it in our county in a way of a public, but give us a chance as citizens of this county to come together, work together, and figure out a way that we can handle this. Because it is a problem, it is very costly, and I know tax dollars are very precious. And you all are trying to figure out the best way to try to save the county, but I really don't think this is the road we want to go down. Because it's, once we go down it, we can't come back from it. So, thank you.
My name is Richard Shula. I live up in Dryden. When you turn on your TV, anytime you turn on your TV, what's the first thing or second thing you will see? Dial 1-800-800-26. You get a law firm who is suing the government on behalf of the military that was stationed at Camp Lejeune between 19, excuse me, 1953 and 1979, I think, somewhere in that area there. There's millions of dollars that's been appropriated, and why? Well, the reason being, and they will tell you this, is because of the water, but the contamination did not come from the base. Now, I can say that because I was the base sergeant major for Camp Lejeune. It came from a dry cleaner. And what it was, they were dumping their cleaning solvents and so forth, and it did. But it got into the aquifer of that whole county. Excuse me. We don't need that here, and we sure don't have the financial means, I don't believe, to do all the testing that needs to be done in order to approve a private landfill. We live in a limestone cave county. Where's that water going to go? It's going to go into the aquifer of where the water come from. So, I go along with the young lady that was just up here and some other folks, and I ask you to take a second look because we're getting ready to step into a bucket that may not be what we think it is. Thank you.
My name's Debbie Artrepp and I'm from Keokee. I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Supervisors to reverse the vote that was passed on September 20th meeting to allow private landfills to be placed into Lee County. The word private is critical to everybody in the county. We don't want to see Lee County become another Bristol. In, I don't do the same research as this young lady, but the research I've been doing is in the grocery stores, places that I go and just talk to people personally. And all of us want to know, is there any board member that will benefit financially, personally, or any of their family's benefit if a private landfill is approved and put in Lee County? Because that's what everybody believes at this point, or they think you would be looking at other options. Now, as far as what you voted on in your last meeting, nobody understood why there wasn't some large ads in the paper, there wasn't more information on social media, and why it wasn't put on local TV stations that you were going to be voting on that, because it came very quickly. And nobody seemed to even be informed that there was going to be such a topic brought up or voted on. So, that's the big question everybody wants to know, is did it come about because somebody here on this board or their family members has something to gain by making it go fast without just, you know, giving us a little time? Now, I talk to my supervisor regularly, but if a private landfill goes in, everybody on the board's going to be held responsible, and we will hold every board member responsible. Our waters will be contaminated, we've got three wells on our property besides our public water. So, what I'm here to ask is that you will remove this amendment from the ordinance and revote and give the public a chance to speak up. Every citizen should have a right to vote on it, or at least know what's going on here. We want to know what's going on before it's too late. So, if you all would please just rescind it, as this young woman said, remove it, remove the amendment, and let us start over and give us an opportunity to speak up before you make your decision. Thank you.
I was here at the last meeting on September 20th. What happened on the last meeting on September 20th is, we felt that you all implied that you weren't going to vote on this topic, and, but then, at 10:15 at night, my son and I were the last ones here after everybody was in private meeting and came out of private meeting and you voted for this landfill, without any of the public there to see it except my son and myself. And we just did not feel that that was right, that the citizens of Lee County, I had asked in that previous meeting that you would let all of the citizens of Lee County put a referendum on the ballot to decide on this. Nobody commented on it, nor did anybody decide to do anything about that statement. Then, previously, I felt like the Lord led me to look back in your meetings. August 16th, when I looked back in your supervisors' meeting, after the Lee County Board of Supervisors came out of their, they went into private session again. Mr. Mosley had already been gone. Let me see here. Mr. Schlumpf left at 7:37 that day. Mr. Mosley left, and then Mrs. Muncie left at 8:57. Then, later on, it was like on page 17, I think, Mr. Cobb moved, and it was seconded by Mr. Smith, I believe, for a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the Waste Management Ordinance to allow privately owned or operated landfills in Lee County. So, from what we understood, you all kind of implied to us that you'd never really heard about it before, that the Planning Commission made these motions, but yet, when I look back on August 16th, you'd already voted to try to have the public have an information on this. So I'm asking you to rescind this, to let the public be able to vote on this in a referendum. I feel that's the only fair thing, because everybody I talked to, nobody wants this. Nobody wants a private landfill in their county. Nobody wants, I've been in places where the water is not good to drink. Nobody wants their children poisoned and their grandchildren's poisoned. And a 10 mil liner, which you suggested on September 20th, failed at Bristol. So, if it failed there, it's not going to fail here, and that's what you're talking about proposing here? So I'm asking you not to do this to our county, not to put more cancer in our county, not to have all the vehicles and all these other things that are going to be coming through our county. And we just ask that you protect our county and the citizens of this county. Thank you.
I want to just clarify one thing that was kind of misleading. I think you made a statement that we kind of misled about, that we didn't know anything about those. But what we said, the statement was, that the Planning Commission was the one for the, what's those, the small buildings?
Recreational vehicles.
The recreational stuff.
Some records to that public hearing.
That was a whole total different public hearing that we said that we weren't aware of until, so there was no...
Well, we felt like you implied that, several other people that I talked to.
There's a difference in thinking and...
No, that's what I said, I felt.
But we did not imply that, that's just for clarification.
Okay, well, like I said, I said I felt, and that's my own personal opinion. Okay?
I just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Okay, all right.
Could you clarify, could you say out loud what you think that you all said, that you said?
Well, it's been a month ago, you can probably look it up on minutes, I can tell you what I said yesterday, I sure did say what I said a month ago. But in those words, that we said something like that, that had to do with those recreational vehicles that we weren't aware of.
Hi, I'm Emma Kelly and I live in Rose Hill. I don't have a lot to say that hasn't already been said, and that honestly, I don't think you guys are already aware of. We know that water flows through Lee County like a sieve, and that any possible pollutant is not restricted to our area, but would have much far-reaching ramifications throughout the limestone karst land of the southeast. We know that privatized landfills aren't coming with appropriate oversight, and that we have concerns about odors, again, health issues, dropping property values. As Jan pointed out, Philly County population is decreasing. My husband and I live here, he owns a business. We are trying to have kids here, we are trying to put down our roots and buy a house, and this is making it difficult. And we hear that in a lot of our social circles. The risk is high, and I think the fact that people have turned out twice at two separate meetings speaks to how strongly the county feels. We know that we have trash and it has to go somewhere, so all we ask is that you reconsider and maybe make it public with proper oversight and proper regulations. Let us take care of our trash. We all want to do that, we are willing to do that. We're not trying to outsource the garbage, we're just trying to make sure that the entity controlling the garbage can be held accountable to the people. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jack Johnson. I live in Jonesville, right downtown Colt Street, I'm on the town council. I've been here a year and a half, and we fell in love with this place when we first saw it, and we wanted to end up being here when I retired. The concerns that I have about this place is, I used to work at a trash-to-energy facility. We burned garbage to make electricity, we had lined landfills for our ash. It's a little bit different than dumping raw materials into the landfill. If it's recycled, I can understand it's going to be a lot better for everybody. We don't know if it's recycled trash you're accepting here, that means anybody can put anything in a dumpster and it can be brought right here. The other thing that I think a lot of the residents don't know is that the trucks that are going to be going up and down your highway, they're going to be, if you accept tractor-trailer loads, you're talking 90,000 pound trucks going over your highways hundreds of times a day, depending on how many trucks they're going through. And that's going to give you grooves and repairs in your highways a lot. I've seen it many, many times. The other thing is, you have two acres, 2.19, how long is it going to take to fill that? That's not a big landfill. Are you planning on topping off it at this two acres, or are they going to expand in the future? Is it going to keep growing, or is it just bottled to two acres? Two acres is relatively small landfill. And the other thing is, it has to be fenced properly because you have bears and other animals down here, they're going to be in that, birds and all kinds of stuff carrying it everywhere. And the last thing I want to bring up is that the mess that trucks leave when they go into these landfills, because it usually has to be watered down, I don't know where they get the water from. And the other thing is, they like to have the trucks cleaned before they leave the landfills, because there's nothing but muck up there in the falls and spring. And this is all going to be brought out on your roadways. And that's got to be cleaned off, a lot of them have truck washes. And if you don't have a truck wash for your trucks coming in and off-site, whether the truck comes in clean, it's not going to leave clean. So I just want you all to realize that, and I think the residents need to know as well. I've worked at a site for 30 years and I've seen a lot of it. Thank you.
I look old and sound old because I am old, as are most of you all. As I said the last, I just wanted to say hello, gentlemen and ma'am, both of you. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. I appreciate the opportunity for you all to hear. I appreciate the opportunity for you all to hear our concerns. And I speak from a tremendous amount of experience. I was here 30 years ago. I was intimately involved in every effort to try to look at private landfills, to try to look at the state regulations. At that time, we didn't have any county regulations and we still don't have any county regulations. Somewhere, I saw a little sentence saying, "If DEQ approves of it, we do," but that's not sufficient. I looked at, we drove all over the county at various sites. People brought to our attention. We never found a site that could handle a substantial amount of garbage. I understand that our garbage now is a basic 40 ton a week or 40 ton a day thing?
It's directly at 45, 45 ton a day.
A day, 45 ton a day. So that's a substantial amount of garbage, not even counting outside landfills or outside garbage. When you say that you will accept and consider private landfills, it's with plural. You cannot tell someone else, "They can't put a landfill in here." We could be the home of private landfills. I've talked to people up in Cumberland County, Virginia. They're having a very, very difficult time dealing with a company out of Canada. That company wants to bring garbage from Canada, but they also want to bring a lot of other garbage down to Cumberland County. And Cumberland County doesn't have the karst problems we have. And karst is not a problem. Having caves is not a problem. We're very proud of our cave system. Old Dominion's geology department has mapped our caves much more than any other cave system east of the Mississippi. So we have a lot to be proud of and we don't want that, those cave systems damaged. That is a potential for very positive tourism. The other thing is the rest of our land is sandstone land and it has been mined. It's been deep mined. It's been stripped mined and it has been, there's been some mountaintop removal. With that happening, all that land, the strata of that land has been broken. So it's like a sieve. Everything goes through. I remember reading the research, even 30 years ago, 10 mil of landfill plastic wasn't holding at that time and certainly wouldn't hold now. So I even, and I know that at that time, Virginia didn't want private landfills. We had the Attorney General's Office to support us and they felt like that they would be getting into a whole lot more trouble than that they would, that would be worth it. When the last private landfill came here, they offered all kinds of things, even to take our garbage for free and give us so much money per ton. I understand that my time is getting out, but at the same time, I think that what I want to ask is that you all...
Your time is up. If you've got somebody else that...
What I want to ask is that you all reconsider.
Okay.
And you can do that, is there is a way that if two people on the board, one makes a motion, the other one second.
We understand.
You can reconsider that. And I'm sure you all know the procedure.
We know the procedure. But your time's up.
I live on 421 North going towards Kentucky. Everyone I speak about the landfill to, everyone up that direction that I've spoke to does not want a landfill of any kind up through their private own. If you want to let one person put a private landfill in and let everybody in the county just put their trash in their own backyard, I'd rather have my trash in my backyard than The same way that you all voted in, you can be voted out. You need to do what the people want. That's all I've got to say about it.
Next.
Wearing this mask because I'm trying to protect everybody else. Like several years ago, my name's Marion Kegley. I live on Pockets Creek. Several years ago, landfill one tried to come in here. He scared a lot of people. A lot of people don't know what will happen if this comes in. I've watched DMLR, Army Corps of Engineer, work 15 to 20 years cleaning up the water on Pockets Creek. If this landfill comes in, people selling out. They've been buying land, homes. They've heard about this and now they want to sell out and leave. I don't know how many on Pockets Creek. I've watched that they bought land and now they're hearing about this and they want to talk about selling out. I think Lee County is one of the most beautiful counties in this United States. I wouldn't give it for the whole world. Please don't let this come in here. It won't stop. In my mind, they won't stop with just filling in the strip jobs. I believe they'll stick it in the old mine works that still stand and anywhere they can put it. That's the way I see it. Please don't let this come in.
Anybody else?
I want to. I live above Stone Creek. It's not just the fact of the private landfill or a county landfill that disturbs everyone here. Our water, most of our waters is well waters up in that area. You know the area good, Sidney. And it's like I said, it's not just that it's disturbing us. It's the way you done it. You didn't give us a chance to speak to you or you, any of you. We had no say. You need to rescind your vote. You need to do it right. You need to do it with respect and show us respect. But that's all we can do for these taxpayers here. Thank you.
Okay, here and now, we'll move along. We're in public expression.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, please. Yeah.
Your motion to reconsider.
Listen, let us run our business up here.
Well, your business is our business.
If you'd stopped long enough, let us run it.
No, we're not going to stop. Your business is our business.
We're trying to conduct business.
Okay, and it's our business.
You said you done it 30 years ago. You should know how it works.
It is our business. We can hear you.
Okay.
And I respect you.
So, now what? You say you want to speak on that?
First thing I want to tell everybody, all we did is pass a resolution to allow a private landfill. We have not talked to anybody or tried to recruit anybody to come in and put in a private landfill.
That's a big thing, Larry. You get it.
But don't be talking from the...
You don't talk to me like that.
Well, you just shut your mouth.
You put your finger at me, I'll say...
We may, we may talk, somebody have to bring this up now. That's why, listen, you're not...
Well, I'll tell you why we brought it up and you need to be quiet too. If you let me speak...
Somebody have to bring this up.
Okay. Listen, listen. Listen, just let him speak. Listen, listen. You're going to have to be removed if you can't, listen, we got to, we got to run the business up here. Let him speak. You spoke, he didn't interrupt you. Just because we don't agree with each other, don't mean we can't speak. And you need to be quiet back there too.
Don't start telling the public, taxpayers out here to do your business. This is our business.
Well, I'll tell you what our business is. If you all don't, if you don't want to conduct business properly, then we're just going to have to shut the corner.
Well, you can conduct business properly. I can prove it and I will prove it.
Well, do it. But anyway...
Anyway, let me speak.
Let him speak.
There, nobody, address you, Debbie, nobody's going to benefit from this. We didn't, we don't, we've not talked to anybody about a private landfill. The reason we passed a resolution to allow it is because if we get cut off at Blountville now, we don't have anywhere to put our trash.
Well, we can put, we can have a public landfill.
Have her removed. Listen, what you, this is the last time.
To tell you this, you're sitting one mile away from a landfill that the county used to run.
Oh, we know that.
And you know what it's costing you right now?
Oh, we know that.
30 years later, $70,000 a year. You know what it costs to open a landfill?
We know that.
Mr. Mosley, you addressed me directly. So what I will know is why everybody's telling me that Calvin is going to be the location. It's going to come down our water stream.
That is not true. Absolutely not true. We've not looked at the place. All we did was pass a resolution.
And that's a bad decision. About opening a private landfill.
No, no.
Somebody has ever done to them, been administrated or...
No, no.
It was the first step.
We're just trying to look ahead in case something happened, that we got cut off, that we had to have another option.
Public expression is over. Accepted. It's over.
Let's go, move on.
Board of Supervisors now are going to address the public.
He keeps talking about the issue.
Just, just don't go there, okay? Just don't go there.
I'm not going to go there.
Well, go there on another time, not tonight.
I will.
Not tonight. Okay, any other Board of Supervisors want to speak on the behalf of the public?
I'll address it, but...
If you address it, I'm going to respond.
Look, I'm not going to have a debate, all right? I don't mind to have one.
You have a right to respond.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for a point of order if you could do something to control...
Well, listen, public expression is over, so it's, there'll be no more talk on it. So next, we'll move on to approval.
I'd like to address it. I'm just asking that you silence the audience.
Well, I...
Well, we could talk them for a hearing and then we get to respond.
You want to get ahold of...
Right here. Ms. Kobag. You were county attorney several years ago.
Thirty years ago.
Okay. There's an order of business and a procedure which is used. Public expression is a time when the floor is open for the public to speak. Once that time is up, it returns, it becomes the board's meeting again to conduct county business. And there's no debate between the public and board members during that time. You can talk to them after the meeting or if they reopen the floor, you can ask questions, but that is...
If he continues the discussion, I'd rather...
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, that isn't, you don't, the public doesn't come to a meeting to participate in discussion on every item on the agenda.
No, we're not participating.
But that's what you're asking to do, ma'am. That's all I'm trying to explain. If it is continuous discussion back and forth, the meeting will never end. It would be here all, we'd be here all night. I mean, that's, that's just how it is.
That's what we're looking for. We're going to be here all night. We're going to be here all night.
With all due respect, just let him, just let him say what he's going to say.
He's going to respond.
It's not, but it's not for discussion. You, you made a statement and that's all he's asking to do is make a statement.
Well, I was limited to three minutes. Is he...
Well, I don't know that he's going to go beyond three minutes, but let's see what he has to say, okay?
Well, I'll respond. I can answer some. I have a right to respond. Show me where I don't have a right to respond.
Public expression is over.
If your public expression is over, then why is this...
Robert's rule orders. He's not out there to public. He's up here to respond to what your, what your concerns were. You're not helping your cases.
We're not the public. We're the board. You're the public. It's over.
You are the public.
All right, I'm going to try this one time.
Yeah.
All right. First of all, you know, I didn't get on the Board of Supervisors to make money. It's a, it's a money loser for me. I got on here to make a difference and I think we've made some difference, not as much as I'd like to frankly, but, but I hope that we are making some difference. And so, yeah, I didn't get on here to try to make any votes happen that would benefit me or that would benefit anybody in my family. I'm, I'm here to try to do what's right. And sometimes what, what's right is popular, sometimes it's not. I'm going to try to respond to several things that were said. I can't hit them all obviously, but, you know, Ms. Kobag, I think in our last meeting made a, maybe it was in the newspaper, said something about recycling. I couldn't agree more with what was said about recycling. We need to try to take waste out of the solid waste stream by recycling. We had a vote on that in 2020. It was four to one vote. I was the one voted to not in the recycling program. I would like to see us revisit that subject and it seems strange to me that we teach kids about recycling in schools, but they don't have anywhere to recycle in Lee County. I think it's money well spent to, to have a recycling program. There was a statement that, and this also may have been in the newspaper, that we had a closed vote. Closed voting is illegal. We did not have a closed vote. There is an audio recording of the vote. As Ms. Herb said, she was here when we voted. We did not have a closed session vote about it. Dane would jump up and down if we tried to have a closed vote about it. Someone asked if anybody on the board had any plans. All I can say is as for me, I have no plans to open a landfill. No interest in opening a landfill. I haven't worked on it. None whatsoever. And that's, a lot of people have reached out to me about that on, on Facebook and I'm glad they do because I tell them all, "No, I'm not opening a landfill. I don't know anybody that is."
So why, why do we...
Mr. Chairman.
Listen.
I would say that I'm probably the most, one of the most environmentally friendly conservatives that you'll find. I'm pro-recycling. I believe in global warming. I believe in recycling. I'm the first to drop down a drink out of the stream. I would never do anything, especially being a farmer. I think most farmers are pretty environmentally conscious. I would never do anything to try to pollute the water quality. Several comments about Bristol. We don't want another Bristol. No, we don't want another Bristol. Bristol was a public-operated facility. But several people here say, "Let's have a public landfill." That's kind of what you get. You know, my, my hopes were that we have somebody like Waste Management, a big company that knows what they're doing, that has engineers on staff, Republic Services, somebody that's responsible, that's done this in a lot of different places and knows what they're doing. We had, as someone mentioned, we had, and I don't mind to tell you, I guess it's 800-pound gorilla. My grandfather and a business partner of his tried to start a landfill in Pockets Creek, Wolf Branch area in 1988. And I think that's probably the basis of people thinking that I'm trying to start a landfill, but I'm not. But under that proposal, and then there was another one by Penn Virginia around the same time, the county would have dumped for free. We're spending about $850,000 a year now to haul our trash to Bristol and to dump. Do the math on that, back to 1988, we would have a pile of money. We wouldn't have these taxes that we have now. It's a thing that could benefit us financially if we would let the right person do it. Let's see. Dane, maybe when we finish, if, if he would, I'd like him to address what all costs are involved in public landfills. And I think the landfill closed right before or right after Dane came in 1996, so maybe he can give us some insight on all the costs that the county has to have in having a public landfill. But I can tell you that I know that there's gas monitoring all around the landfill, there's water monitoring, and that stuff goes on for years after the landfill is closed. You know, being a conservative, I don't think the government does a good job at doing much of anything. I'm not satisfied with much that the county does and I damn sure don't think that we're capable of running a landfill. Now, we, we don't satisfy me with picking up the trash and hauling it to the, to the pad where it goes to the landfill. So I, I wouldn't dare even attempt for us to run a landfill. And with the decreased population that we have now, it would cost a lot more to run a landfill. Someone asked about what we considered as far as environmental things. You know, maybe I shouldn't, but I trust the folks at the DEQ in Richmond and Abingdon that study these kind of... You know, maybe I shouldn't, but I trust the folks at the DEQ in Richmond and Abingdon that study these kinds of things, that have engineers and geologists and chemists and all the people that you need to have a landfill. They regulate this. No one, just because you're private doesn't mean you get a, an in-run around the DEQ. You would still have to, to satisfy their, uh, requirements. Before you could even start the landfill, and then once you started it, the DEQ would constantly be monitoring the landfill. We don't have the capability to know where a good place is and where a bad place is, so that would be on DEQ.
There's points to do there.
Okay, so someone talked about public hearing. So what we did was we passed a resolution that would allow public, uh, that would allow private landfills upon special use permit, which is something I think needs to be addressed in the meetings. It wouldn't be that it would just come and we would sign off on it. There would be a public hearing when someone actually proposed to do it. They would lay out their plan, where they wanna do it, et cetera. We'd make sure they had proper bonding. DEQ would make sure they had those kinds of things. So there would be another public hearing at the time. Um, someone said that private landfills will hurt tourism. Well, Waste Management has landfills scattered out all over the country. I mean, you can't say that everywhere there's a Waste Management facility or a, a private landfill that there's no tourism. I mean, that's just not true. I mean, Bristol has tourism. They have a landfill. I think they have two of them now, actually. Uh, we could put stipulations on the special use permit. Uh, we don't have to allow trash from China. Uh, we could say, yeah, we'll allow it, but here's what we'll allow you to do, and here's what we won't allow you to do. Uh, someone talked about limestone. Not all of Lee County is full of limestone. Of course, DEQ would look at it and see where's a good place and where's a bad place, and maybe we have no good place. I know it's been stated that, uh, some geologists studied it back in the eighties, and I think they did, but they didn't study the whole county. Uh, they studied a particular place up around my office in the Stone Creek area. Um, you know, one thing that I've especially tried to do since I've been on the board is try to make things transparent. We had a really crummy sound system. Now we have a pretty good sound system. We're not able to use it today because we're in this courtroom, but we have a good sound system. You can go back to the first meeting that we had when I was on the board, and you can listen to all the audio recordings online. And I think that's good. I'm glad to see people here, even though we don't share the same belief today. But it's good to have people more involved, and, and, you know, I wish we had this many people at every meeting. And, and I wish people would stay at the end of the meeting. A lot of times they get up, say a piece, and then they leave, and I, I want them to hear what the whole discussion is. So I appreciate you all being here. Uh, but, you know, I, I do wanna make things as transparent as possible, and I think we all do.
I'm certainly not doing.
The meeting, uh, someone mentioned that we took the vote at ten fifteen. We did take it at ten fifteen, uh, somewhere in that neighborhood. It wasn't to try to wait anybody out or anything like that. We had, I think, four public hearings, uh, several things. We, we had.
Five, I think, maybe.
Yeah, it, it was a long meeting. Um, we, some legal issues were raised by Ms. Kobak. We talked about legal issues with council. We went over those things. We came out, we made a vote on it. Uh, somebody said something about a ten-year liner at Bristol. I don't remember any of us ever saying that we wanted to have a landfill with a ten-year liner. I, I'm not even, don't know why anybody would want just a ten-year liner in a landfill.
It's not ten years, it's ten mill.
Ten mill liner.
Okay, well, I, I don't know who proposed that from our board, 'cause I don't know what a ten-mill liner is.
I don't either.
Someone mentioned a landfill on a two-acre site. I don't know where that comes from. There's been no landfill proposed, so it, I think certainly wouldn't be on a two-acre site. Uh, all right, other people mentioned, what if we get too many landfills? What if we become the place that, of landfills? Well, if a landfill wanted to come in and we permitted one landfill through special use permit, after we got one that could handle our trash, we could just have another vote to get rid of landfills. I mean, in nineteen eighty-eight, there was a vote to outlaw landfills in Lee County. So before nineteen eighty-eight, you could have had multiple landfills in Lee County. We could do the same thing. I don't think anybody, no business would come into Lee County with a bunch of landfills already here and try to establish another one. There's just not enough people to get here. The roads aren't good enough to get here. Uh, advertisements, there was an advertisement in the newspaper for the hearing. It was on the audio recordings, which, by the way, need to be updated more often. I think we need to get them updated every month. And it was on Facebook, which is something else we've established since I've been on the board to try to reach out to more people. Uh, again, I wanna make, make it clear, I have no plans, and I don't know of anyone who plans on opening a landfill. No plans whatsoever. And just to echo what Mr. Mosley said, the idea was, we're spending so much money to get rid of our trash now. If somebody did wanna come in here and open a landfill, create some jobs, give people who are, you know, strip mine, uh, guys who can operate heavy equipment in the strip mines, but they could do it at landfill now, it would be a good opportunity for us. Uh, Bristol's not a rundown slum because they have a couple of landfills, and neither would we be. Uh, so I hope this helps some.
It doesn't.
I'd like to just ask, maybe, uh, Mr. Poe, correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I think I told, uh, Debbie this, but there are only certain, we're limited to so many sites in the county that are even eligible for that.
Yeah, with current zoning.
Yeah.
With current zoning.
And that limits it to, it was very few sites.
Yes.
So, but I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause I told, I think I talked to Ms. Archer about that recently, and there's only certain sites that, that are permitted in.
Only after the people can.
No, we're not. Uh, public expression has been over for some time. So, so any more Board of Supervisors have anything to, uh, message about? Questions or concerns or answers? And I think most people that know me and my district know that I have no, I have no interest in, in a landfill. I mean, it's. Anyway, let's move on to approval of minutes. September twentieth, twenty-two, the regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, on page fourteen, I don't believe the minutes are correcting that, uh, regarding the Planning Commission. It says that it was moved by Mr. Cobb, second, by Mr. Mosley, that no public hearings are to be advertised by the Planning Commission. The idea was that when the Planning Commission sent something up to us to consider, that it wouldn't be advertised until we said for it to be advertised. They could advertise their public hearings whenever they wanted to.
Well, the process of the zoning ordinance is that once the planning hearing, Planning Commission conducts a public hearing, it automatically moves on to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing. So the only way to not have that process initiate would be for the board to approve it to move forward to begin with.
That may be lawful, but that's not what the vote was. The vote was for us to not advertise for public hearing, and I don't agree with your interpretation of what the ordinance has said. I've gone over this with the zoning administrator, and I don't agree with his interpretation either. I think he may want it to be that way. But that's not the way it is, and that's not the way it is in the code either. We can talk with council more in closed session about it if we need to, but regardless, that's not what the motion was.
So no, no, there to be no advert- advertisements for public hearing by the Board of Supervisors?
Correct. Without us voting to advertise it.
Okay.
It wouldn't just automatically get advertised.
Okay.
And then on page thirty-two, third of the way down the page, that was upon special use permit. It doesn't mention special use permit. Thirty-two.
Well, the zoning ordinance requires the special use permit. The waste, the, uh, Waste Management Facilities ordinance has no role for a special use permit. It would still have to go through zoning, and that's where the special use permit is required.
I'd make an amendment to approve on subject to those two amendments, or to that one amendment.
Okay, we got a motion to approve on the one amendment. Second. And a second. All in favor? Aye aye. Any opposed? Okay, next we got refund request for Alba Sea Roland.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye aye. Any opposed? Okay, next we got payroll. County Administrator reports payroll warrants have been issued. And next on the agenda, we got approval of dispersments.
Can we have a little discussion on that? I know we usually move pretty quickly through that.
Yeah.
I, I think at least two people on the board have signaled that we want to clawback, uh, money from Bristol. We want to sue Bristol for enforcement of the contract. And now in the approval of dispersments, we're paying Bristol. They breached the contract with us to take our trash in nineteen fifty a ton until twenty, twenty-five, I think it is. And they, they breached, and now that we're, we're paying more than fifty percent that amount to get rid of our trash, and we're gonna send them money for September. I say we don't pay them money for September, and then we sue them if they don't wanna negotiate with us about breaching the contract.
Well, I could agree with that, but we have to approve the rest of the dispersment.
Yeah, I, I get the rest of them, but if you approve it as it is, then you're approving to send them a check when they owe us money.
Approved with exception, too.
Which, as you know, I always vote against them anyway, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point that out to you.
You will. Well, you can, uh, you wanna go ahead and make that motion?
No, I never vote for them.
Well, you don't have to vote for them. You vote no, but you can still make your motion again.
I can't make the motion and then vote no on my motion.
You wanna go ahead and make it? Yeah, I make the motion with the exception of, uh, paying Bristol. Okay, got a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, delegations, we got Spearhead Trails update. Mr. James Markham.
I said they'd leave, so it's fucking scary.
They probably did. Okay, and, uh, we'll just move right along from that one. Go to Finance and Supplemental Appropriations. Finance.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental appropriations. Got a motion to approve, got a second. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the, under new business, we got, uh, board appointments. Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I, there's one appointment that I would like to add to the agenda.
Okay.
And that's the Mountain, uh, Mountain Empire Community College Board. It was tabled at the last meeting and, uh, was on the agenda for tonight, but it needs to be. I've got somebody that wants to serve. Okay. You wanna proceed with it? You wanna go ahead and proceed with that? Yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion. We appoint Scott Napper to the Mountain Empire Board.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, how about the airport authority?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that till next month. Uh, I tried to reach out to Alan, Dan, I didn't get to talk to him, but I'd like to table that till November.
Okay, got a motion to table. Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed?
I believe you've got two of those on there, don't you? I believe Mr. Slint has an appointment on the airport tour.
Yeah, I have.
I just.
On the hospital board. I have a, on the park.
You have an appointment on it?
Yeah, I want to, uh, appoint somebody to the, to the hospital. Hospital board.
Airport.
Airport board.
I'm only showing one.
Airport board.
Uh, we didn't get a resignation by email, and, uh, uh, I failed to get that on here. I apologize about that.
I'd like to, uh, appoint, uh, Gary Rast- Rastnik to the hospital, to the, uh.
Airport.
Airport board.
Say Gary.
Uh huh.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
Okay. Next we got the Tourism Committee.
Get yours.
I don't think so. I don't think we came up.
Should Brian Hogan? Wasn't in your district. You put him on.
No, I didn't. No?
He's in your district.
I don't know if it's not district related now. We voted not to do that.
We each have an appointment, but you don't have to point it from your district. I put Murray. Yeah, I put Murray Beth Baker on, and that's for you.
Uh, make a motion to reappoint Brian Hogan to the.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, you're right. They don't know about that. Okay, next we got a PSA funding request for Blackwater Community Water Project. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take that up in closed session. Okay, got a motion. Take that up. Second. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got reassessment status.
Uh, next is the VODT.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Proposed VDOT bridge abandonment.
I've included some information in your packet that was sent to us by VDOT. Uh, they're, uh, they propose to close a couple of bridges here in the county or to abandon them to, due to their need of repair or replacement and the limited public benefit of each one. Uh, the first one is near Ewing. Uh, it's on Buella Road. Uh, it's between the old and new road, but it really doesn't connect, uh, to the new road and doesn't serve a purpose beyond the creek that I can see, uh, based on the map. Uh, and also it has a, a very low, uh, usage, vehicle usage, uh, number. Uh, not sure if anyone actually uses the structure. There's a couple of houses on the old road uh, that the bridge is behind, there, there's, their houses, but I don't think they use it to access. They can't access the, the four-lane highway from that location. Uh, also, the second one is at Hagan. Uh, it connects Old Fifty-Eight with Scott Hollow Road. Uh, that bridge is on a connecting roadway segment. It's approximately a hundred feet long, the, the whole road segment, including the bridge. Uh, and it's approximately seven hundred feet from another intersection, uh, between Old Fifty-Eight and Scott Hollow Road. So, uh, due to the, due to the disrepair of both of these, VDOT is, is proposing that they be abandoned, and, uh, they just wanted the board to be aware, uh, of this. If the board wants to schedule a public hearing to take public calm in on it, uh, you certainly can request that.
I saw in their letter, I saw in their letter that they said that they wanted to take that money and use it elsewhere, but they didn't say where the elsewhere was. I talked to somebody that lives down there close that rode in Scott Hollow earlier today to ask what their opinion was on it, and they said, well, if they're gonna take that money and use it somewhere else, they should use it on the road on the other side of the hill, boom trail path that they partially tarred and gravelled but didn't finish it. So they said, if, we'd be okay with getting rid of that bridge if they'd finished the road.
Now, that's a request you can make to VDOT, certainly.
Well, what would you all think about in, in our resolution that we say we're okay with getting rid of it if you'll use the, the money in that community to fix that road?
Well, I would think it would be the same for both of them. The first, you know, the first road can be benefited from it.
We might be tabled that and allow Mr. Poe to draft a resolution to.
I think so.
But the road boom trail path is the one that is only partially, uh, tarred and gravelled.
Okay, is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we go to the Reassessment Status.
Chairman, this is indicated in the memo included in the packet. We were trying to coordinate signatures on the contract during late August and September. Was having difficulty getting in touch with the, the gentleman who would be over the reassessment. Uh, he had, I did find out later that he had had some sickness and had been delayed on being able to get up here to take care of some things. He was supposed to have been in the last week of September to sign the document and start getting some of the other information that was needed or the other documents that were needed to move forward. He called last week, week before last now, uh, to advise that he had had additional health issues and was requiring surgery and would not be able to perform the reassessment at all. Based on that development, then the Board will need to determine how best to proceed with obtaining another assessment.
I would suggest re-advertising.
Who was under him, Dane?
There were two other proposals that were suggested.
Were any of them local?
Yeah.
He was the only one that's local.
He wasn't local. I mean, he lives in Tennessee, Mount Tennessee.
Didn't he used to live in Leachville?
Yes.
And how detailed is their advertisement as to all the things that was thought of with bright minds concerning bonding?
Well, that's one of the things you suggested. If we use, if we're going to re-advertise, we need to update the RFP.
I think, once you draft that, we should have our county attorney look at it. I'd make a motion to re-advertising.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, next we got the Jasper Property Issue.
Wanted you to be aware, we are in the process of obtaining a survey for the potential property purchase at Jasper. Uh, in initiating action for a special use permit, we discovered that a portion of the property is in the floodway. Uh, I've asked the surveyor, when they, as they do the survey, to also mark the floodway line on the survey. Uh, of course, property was bought as, or is proposed to be purchased as approximately one acre. Uh, in the area that we were thinking the property was, it's less than an acre. So we would like to be able to evaluate exactly how much property there is out of the floodway before we determine whether or not it's gonna be feasible to try to develop that.
Can you not tell most of that on the thing with maps? How much of it's in the floodway?
Well, we can see it on there, but we can't see where the land surveys. The, the tax maps show that as one large boundary. And the property's been broken up since that time, and it's not recorded. So, once we get the survey, we'll be able to identify just how much property there is out of the floodway, whether there's enough there to develop.
I may be wrong, but I thought it's bounded on one side by the road and one side by the railroad tracks.
Uh, the, the, uh, the road is on the east side. The creek is on the north side. Or, I may have my directions. Anyway, you've got a creek, the road, the railroad, and then the balance of her, their property that's been transferred to other family members. But there is no division line there on our tax maps to show us where that line is at. That's what the survey will show us, how far over, beyond the bottom, but beyond that little bottom area, there's some wooded land that goes beyond that. If part of that is part of this one acre parcel, there may be enough out of the floodway to develop it.
And if it is in the floodway?
If it's in the floodway, you can't fill it. You, you can't put anything in that, in a floodway area. You can put it in floodplain, but not in floodway. But the survey will give us enough information to make that determination.
I think that was where my original concern came from when we first talked about that.
And they, uh, they were over their last week's survey. I talked to the, to the surveyor.
So we need a motion for just to, uh...
Don't need any action this fourth week. I was gonna have a survey, but I didn't have it. I thought they were already over their work prior to last week. But when I talked to them, they just found out what they were doing.
Okay, next we got Vehicle Bids.
Bids to view yesterday. The, uh, the bids for police cruisers and also bids for pickup truck for the building inspection office. First of all, let me say we got no bids whatsoever for police vehicles. I followed up with state contract today. COVID has created a strange market. The cutoff date under state contract for police vehicles was August 30th to place an order. I'm assuming from that that it was because they wanted to be able to make sure they could deliver those vehicles by June 30th, which would be the end of the fiscal year. So at this point, I'm not sure what other options may be out there. There's also Sheriff's Association. But I looked at it, I haven't checked everything as far as police vehicles on state contract. I just checked one or two. And the cutoff date for both was, uh, August 30th. On the pickup truck, we had two bids, both from Freedom Chevrolet of Big Stone Gap. Both of these trucks are in stock. No one, she sends these out to probably eight or 10 dealerships in the region. Uh, this was the only two that we got back in. One of these was a, both of these are 2022 trucks. They're both half-ton Silverada's, four-wheel drive. Uh, the first one has a five-foot, 10-inch bed with a crew cab. It's a 2.7-liter, four-cylinder turbo engine with an 8-speed transmission and 20-inch tires. It's white in color and black interior, which is what we typically specify. The bid price on that was $38,627. The, uh, 2022 half-ton, the other one is a four-wheel drive, six-foot, seven-inch bed, nine inches longer, double cab. It is a 5.3-liter V8 with a 10-speed and 17-inch tires. It's blue exterior color and black interior. That memo, this memo was drafted this afternoon, very late, when I found out we were gonna have to move courtroom. Instead of $40,000, the price on that should be $40,999. Also, uh, neither one of these, we specified running boards, and neither one of these trucks had running boards. They can be added by the dealer for $750. And, uh, they also requested a lockable bed cover. That can be added at a cost of $1,508.50. I did check the, just for Chevrolets, because I was running out of time this afternoon. The state contract for Chevrolet trucks also had a, a order date deadline of August 30th. Never seen. You think, usually with state contracts, the bid cutoff is sometime in April or March of the following year. But this year, they're cut off very early due to the delay in production.
Why do they need a bed cover?
Pardon?
Why do they need a bed cover?
They're hoping they, they need a step ladder. They're hoping to get a six-foot step ladder in order to be able to access stuff. They wanted to be able to keep it in the truck and be able to lock it up so they wouldn't have a risk of losing it.
Well, a six-foot step ladder's not gonna fit in a five-foot 10-inch bed.
If you turn it at an angle, it will.
Yeah. Okay.
Because I do eight-foot ones in the six-foot bed.
I don't see reason to get a 5.3-liter.
They're, I, I talked to them today. They're fine with the four-cylinder. Haven't had much experience with the turbos, but, uh, I mean, I, I think for local use, it'll be fine. And we don't pull trailers or anything heavy. If I was doing that, I would want to be eight myself, but that's not what these are used for.
I make a motion that we approve the bid from Freedom Chevrolet for the pickup truck for $38,627.
Now, is that with the addition of the two?
With the bed cover and the running boards.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion and a, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got Reports and Recommendations of the County Attorney.
Excuse me, I don't have anything to report. I would request closed session for a couple of legal issues that you all had requested some research conducted on.
Okay. Reports and recommendations of the County Administrator?
Have three items. One item, this came to light at our last Airport Authority meeting. Some discussion, and when I checked here, Mr. Cobb had made some comments. And when I checked, I realized, uh, there was discussion at the May 31st Budget Workshop, uh, on this year's budget. During that discussion, it was proposed that we, that the county provide a $5,000 appropriation through the budget to the Airport Authority. And everything before and after that got included in the budget worksheets. But I did not pick that up when I was extending the worksheets. So that did not come out in the final budget. So the request tonight would be to provide a supplemental appropriation of that $5,000 to honor the intent of the original budget.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The, uh, second item I have is, is an update. The current building official, Mr. Bush, had originally indicated that he planned to retire in mid-January. He advised me last week that he will be retiring effective November the 1st. On a follow-up note, Mr. Carter is progressing well in his testing, so, uh, we're, I think we'll be in good hands. The third item I have was brought in from, by a citizen in the Rose Hill area who has purchased some property, uh, that has some platted streets in it that have never been developed. And because of the adjoining properties on each side, no one actually utilizes that property to gain access to any other property. And, uh, they're, he, they are asking that the Board consider abandoning the streets that are on that property. I have a map on that, if you want. Wait until we've got time to lay it out here and take a look at it, and then you can act on it later. Uh, it would require a public hearing to be held prior to that being done.
What's that?
Pardon?
What was that?
Uh, this is down, it's part of the old Doc Owens' property. Straight across from where McPherson's had the tractor dealership. Straight across the road there.
Everybody want to take a look at that before you take any action?
I'd want to look at it.
Yeah.
My, my general thoughts, I don't think you should give up your right of way if you have one. I don't see the benefit to the public in giving up our right of ways.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, Reports and Recommendations of the...
I've got a couple of things there, Mr. Chairman. A day on the animal control where when David Wilder was on call for, for all the weekends, every weekend, did they get that worked out where that was rotated?
I'll go check. I'm sure they suggested that, but I'll make sure.
Uh, the next thing to the Board is, uh, Gary Collinsworth. He's at a Thomas Walker working now. He's, uh, taking out trees down around the pool and all that. And here, very shortly, he will be getting started on the basketball court. There's this east of the swimming pool. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, a few things. Uh, one, we had, I think, voted a while back to start putting things on, in old business. Until the task was complete that we set out to complete, we would put it on old business and revisit and see where we were until it, until it was finished. And there's a lot of things that should be on old business that are not. For example, Amy Greer came to us from Mountain Empire last month, proposed that we give $41,000, I think it was. And then every student who graduated from Lehigh or Thomas Walker could go two years for free to Mountain Empire. I think they were supposed to propose a contract or something was supposed to be done to follow up on that. And I haven't seen anything. Has she proposed something?
That's, that was to begin next year, in 2023.
Right.
The way I understood the conversation, I think you asked the question, are you asking us tonight? And she said, no, no, we're not making a request at this time. So I would expect they'll either come back with a budget request on that with their budget next year or a separate request.
We talked about some, some guarantee. I, I remember saying that I didn't want to just write them a blank check. If they're gonna do that, there needs to be something drawn up saying, for this money, you guaranteed that these students are gonna be able to go. So I, I don't want to get that sprung on us at the last minute.
I, I'll send them a note and just tell them that we will want specifics on what's being provided when they do submit a request.
Regarding the opioid funds, uh, when did you say that that workshop was? Is that already taking place?
Yes, it was, uh...
Could you kind of give us an update on, regarding those funds?
It was October 12th. Uh, I checked through that. It's pretty much just a broad overview. They do not have specifics worked out at this time. They give you a lot of, you know, just general, uh, the, uh, I mean, I, I didn't prepare that, and I just had, picked up the pad that had those notes on it.
I will say, I provided to Richard, too, a copy that I forwarded you that our legal counsel on that had forwarded as far as appropriate, um, uses, you know, for the funds.
I have a copy of, of, I think this was one that they provided, that they have, uh, a presentation on, on it that I can provide. It, it didn't provide a lot of in-depth information. The biggest thing on it, uh, Virginia had a 100% participation of all cities and counties participating in this, which qualifies actually for some extra funding. The allocation is based on harm per capita formula. They didn't share what that formula actually was, but that, that's how it is based. The opioid, they, they indicated the opioid abatement authority is an independent body from the state. It, you know, it's not dictated by the state is what they can do. The county can partner with a provider, but must oversee the work in complying with procurement and everything in, in providing services for this. Only state agencies, cities and counties will receive funding from the state for this. Of course, the county receives some funds directly. Then you can also apply to the state for funding. But, but it has to be a state agency, a city or a county to actually receive funds from the state fund. Uh, in other words, a mental health, uh, corporation cannot apply for those funds. So it's gonna require partnerships between counties and the providers who can provide the services.
Well, are there any deadlines that we're up against?
No. Uh, no, nothing on that. There will be, uh, the first two payments have been made. And these are, these are sort of piecemeal. Not all of the, uh, the, one of the settlements was for distributors. That's the funds that we have gotten to date is from the distributors of the drugs. Johnson &amp; Johnson, uh, first payment from them was expected 10/14. I haven't gotten any notice from the Treasurer's Office that we have received anything on that, but that was just a tentative date. There will be, from the distributors, uh, the payout will be $21 billion. There will be from the distributors, the payout will be $21 billion over 18 years nationwide. You're required to spend a minimum of 85% of the funding that you receive on opioid We qualify for the 85% instead of the 100% because we had initiated prior litigation. If you had not initiated prior litigation prior to the settlement, then you have to spend 100% on abatement, or remediation, excuse me. The Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement will be $5 billion over 10 years. There'll be an initial payment in 2022, and if I understood him correctly, I don't think there'll be another payment on that until 2025 or 2026. On that one, each pot's going to have different requirements. There'll be a minimum of 86.5% on remediation. Now, they prefer that you spend 100% on remediation, but the minimums are 85 for the distributors and 86.5 on the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Any other use other than remediation must be reported in writing to the settlement administrator, the pharma companies and the public prior to using the funds for that. As far as the state funding, 15% of those funds will go to cities and counties. 35% go to projects with multiple counties and cities involved, 15% to state agencies, and 35% is unrestricted.
Dane, let me ask you this, who, who do you want to appoint person to brief? I guess we started committee with Larry now on it. Who's going to give us something, writing, laying out the parameters?
The, well, I can, I can draft you something, but the parameters are really not being set yet. They are just getting organized at the state level, and the guy who's there is the director. He said, you know, we're, we're still formulating stuff. We're still putting things together. So, I mean, they hope to roll that out by December, by, late December.
But you're going to...
I'll, I'll take the point on it for now. But it will be up to you and Mr. Mosley to determine what other committee members you want to serve.
Well, you're talking outside of the board?
Yes.
Right, okay. All right, on the St. Charles rescue, where are we on lease to them?
I've looked at it. I haven't got anything drafted for them yet. I've been, I mean, I, I've worked on it, but I don't have anything concrete yet for them.
Okay. I brought it up last meeting about the lease amount to DSS. I believe they're not paying as much as they're supposed to.
I'll, I'll go check on that, because I haven't checked with yet.
What about the tree at DSS that we've been talking about for years?
That's on the list of things that they need to do, so...
It's, it's getting worse and it's up in the power lines now.
We'll, we'll either have to block that area off the day before so that no one will park anywhere near it, or get them to move cars even though, either on the upper side, or we'll have to try to take it down on the weekend.
I think you were going to brief us on Don Purdy's, the internet, Starlink internet, more about the proposal there from them?
I'll have to get that together.
What about the county code recertification?
We've got that, the draft back from the provider. I've gotten it to Ms. Muncy. I'd not reviewed it myself. I've got it to her. I want to review it as well. It comes with recommendations, based, some base recommendations on things that need to either be updated or changed in it to comply with state code, or at least just a recommendation to sort of clean it up a little bit. So once we've been able to do that, also I've got to compile the ordinances that we have adopted, and there have been a few since we initially provided this to them, for them to adopt and incorporate into that.
Can you provide any of us a copy that wants a copy of that?
Yeah. Yeah. I can...
I've got the old code, I just don't have the proposal.
Okay. Yeah. I, I don't remember if I did a scan. I, I made Ms. Muncy a copy so that she could make notes on it, but I'll, I can provide a scanned copy to anybody that wants it, or a hard copy, whichever you prefer.
I mentioned earlier regarding the landfill issue, but I think we need to do a better job of getting those minutes out on time, the draft minutes. Supposed to be 10 days. I don't believe we've been getting them at all, and then the audio recordings.
The last time, last month? Don't ask me what happened. We had a three-and-a-half-hour recording with no sound whatsoever. I went, I took the machine back to the courtroom, the, I think it was the next day when we discovered. She checked it that morning to see if we had the recording. Took it back to the courtroom the next afternoon, after they'd gotten out from court, set it up the exact same, same way I normally set it up, did four test runs and got a recording every time.
So this is the one of the landfill?
Yes, unfortunately. And so...
I referred to it, and then I referred to it, it wasn't on the website.
We had to wait for Mr. Hartley's copy of his tape to come out for us to even be able to prepare the minutes.
So we have Mr. Hartley's?
Well, yeah, and, but his didn't go till the time we went into closed session. He wrapped up a little early, I think.
Well, can we just get his?
We, uh...
You all got the weed.
Yeah.
We get his.
Do we have authority to post yours, or is yours on YouTube, or?
It's on YouTube.
We could put a link to where it's at on YouTube. It's cop, it's sort of, it's public material, but it's his copy. I mean, yeah, we buy it, but I don't know if that gives us right to repub...
It's for public use.
Okay. We'll put a link on there to give them to it.
Joe Bates money. Somebody asked me if we had been paid back the money that was loaned to Joe Bates.
That's an EDA issued. I don't have the records on that.
You don't have a clue?
No. If it's not been fully paid back, he is making his payments. Because I, I'm assuming, because I haven't heard anything. I know the last I heard, he was making the payments on it.
We've done a pretty poor job over the last several years of keeping up with buildings. For example, Ewing Elementary School, the, the school board gave that to the county. The county didn't do anything with it for a long time. It got vandalized and it ended up being auctioned off for, I think, $10,001. Could have been a good building. No security, no nothing. We made the same mistake at the school board office. It shouldn't have had to been torn down, but we didn't look at it. It got flooded, things that shouldn't have happened. Now, we go up there the other day to sell the buildings in St. Charles, somebody had broken in, vandalized it, stole the copper. We need somebody, I suggest that it's a building inspector that goes around once a month with something and looks at the buildings and says, here's some issues. Gutters are stopped up, you busted pipe. I mean, nobody looks at it, and then it gets ruined, and then we sell it for pennies on the dollar. What are y'all's thoughts about having the building inspectors, when they're out in an area occasionally, take a look at the buildings?
I don't have a problem with a bug in that.
I don't either, but they're going to be there one day and you've got 29, 30 days left in that month.
Yeah, I mean, it can't be there every day, but we can, we need, we need to do a better job of securing the buildings that we have that are vacant.
With respect to those St. Charles buildings, I think that vandalism occurred before we took possession of them.
It was the last time that I was in them, which the EDA owned them then, they were not vandalized.
Okay.
And, um, that's all I have besides stuff for closed session.
Got anything, Larry? Closed session. Charles, I don't have anything, if you want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion and go into closed session pursuant to 8.2 days, 3711, sub-1, personnel, five prospective business, seven threatened or pending litigation, eight consultation with counsel, and 29 contracts.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?